At seven o'clock, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for coming here and signing in on TV. We're being broadcast live over Van Buren Television Channel 12. Secretary Montgomery, will you please take the role?
Supervisor McInerney.
Here.
Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee White.
President.
You have a call.
Thank you. We have a new line item that we're going to be doing a short summary of the items that we have going on today. After the boards approve the agenda, the boards will begin by going through a consent agenda, just to let everybody know for the future, so I don't have to do it every time. But a consent agenda allows items from the past or items that require a little discussion to be voted on as a group. If any board member, any single board member has a question, that item will be removed from this grouping and taken up later in the meeting for a full board inquiry. Almost all these items have been reviewed at our work study or personally. Today, we have a short update from the Senior Alliance. We do that once a year. I think Meals on Wheels primarily. We look forward to that. Today is the supervisor's time to give the State of the Township address. It has been done in video so that we can get through that. We also have our Honored Bart DeVos Officer Sergeant, who is going to be taking a resolution for his retirement going to Belleville. We're also going to be talking about an Ypsilanti Township Fire Department Mutual Aid Agreement, a lighting contract for the township parking lot, capital improvement plans for the township of $200,000 for work that was not completed but budgeted last year, and new rules and procedures for how our Board of Zoning Appeals goes. We've also added one thing to the agenda, which would be a resolution on our Visteon lawsuit that is going to the Supreme Court right now. So we're going to keep on moving. I'm going to start with adoption of the agenda.
To the supervisor?
Yes.
To make a motion, we approve the adoption of the agenda as presented, also noting there will be new business item one to be considered, the approval of Resolution 2018-10 concerning the Visteon lawsuit, and all of the other numbers will be numbered to be two, three, four, and five, and there will be under correspondence the resolution for Bart DeVos.
Thank you. I have a motion for all by Treasurer Bud, support by Frazier, Treasurer Frazier, by Trustee Frazier. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Trustee Miller, can you make a motion for the revised consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the revised consent agendas, starting with one, special work-study session minutes of May 10, 2018. Work-study session minutes of May 14, 2018, number two. Number three, closed session minutes of May 14, 2018. Number four, board meeting minutes of May 5, 2018. Number five, prepaid list of May 17, 2018. Number six, prepaid list of May 24, 2018. Seven, prepaid list of May 31, 2018. Eight, voucher list of June 5, 2018. Nine, approval of the reappointment of Loretta Speaks to the Water and Sewer Commission with a term to expire June 1, 2020. Ten, approval of the reappointment of Walter Rohobiak to the Water and Sewer Commission with a term to expire June 1, 2020. Eleven, approval of the appointment of Michael McGovern to the Construction Board of Appeals with a term to expire February 28, 2020. Twelve, approval of the Storm Water Maintenance Agreement and Resolution 2018-09 for ARC CSVBTM I think that's a 1-0-0-1 LLC, aka Constellium, and that, I think that's an I actually. Thirteen, approval of the Storm Water Maintenance Agreement and Resolution 2018-08 for Mazur USA Incorporated.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion for approval and I have support. Are there any questions on this before we? Okay, I hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to also make note that Loretta Speaks and Walter Rohobiak donated another take two to four years of their time on our Water and Sewer Board. They've done this for many, many years, and we're very thankful for them. Also, Michael McGovern is joining us. He's going to be joining our Construction Board of Appeals. We're very thankful for him joining us. He's got a two-and-a-half, two-year term. Three-year term, excuse me. Okay, moving on. We have no public hearing. Correspondence and announcements. Does anybody, do we do correspondence and announcements first? All right, let's go through it. Hold on a second. Let me go through and do Bart first. First of all, Director, could you come forward? Thank you.
dressed kind of casual there, now that he's retired.
Bart's taken care of us a long time. We're going to make sure he goes first.
Good evening, members of the board, people in the audience and our viewers at home. Board of Trustees, you know that Bart has served our township very well as a police sergeant, most recently, and has retired at the beginning of May this year. And I have the honor tonight to read a proclamation honoring Bart DeVos from the Board of Trustees. Bart leaves legacy after 27 years as a police sergeant with our department, as a leader, trainer, and a mentor to our new recruits. The Board of Trustees of the Territory Township of Van Buren, Wayne County, Michigan, offer the following proclamation. Whereas it is with great pleasure that we, the members of the Van Buren Township Board of Trustees, recognize and bestow due honor upon Barton DeVos, a newly retired sergeant of the Van Buren Township Police Department. And whereas Barton DeVos began his career with the Van Buren Township Police Department in 1991 as a reserve officer, and in 1994 was promoted to full-time. Barton DeVos rose to the rank of sergeant and held several special assignments during his career, such as field training officer, dive team member, bicycle unit officer, and the commanding officer of the field training program. Barton DeVos was also a key player in the Camp with a Cop program, which he remained active for six years. And whereas Barton DeVos has earned numerous service awards, to include a Certificate of Merit, Life Saving Award, Community Service Award, Staff and Command Leadership Award, Valued Service Award, several unit participation awards, and a Safe Driving Award. He has graduated Eastern Michigan University School of Police and Staff Command, and also graduated from the Michigan Police Executive Development School, sponsored by the FBI National Academy Associates. And whereas Barton DeVos has been a longtime resident of Van Buren Township, moving to the township in 1984, where he has raised two sons, Barton Jr., a police officer in Sumter Township, and Nicholas, an engineer at Ford Motor Company. Barton and his sons are active disc golfers, hunters, and outdoor enthusiasts. And whereas Barton DeVos is being recognized for a well-deserved reputation throughout the township and law enforcement community, that he was a fair and compassionate police officer who exemplified integrity and honesty. And now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed this fifth day of June 2018, that this proclamation endure as a lasting record of acknowledgement, and that suitable copy be presented to Barton DeVos in appreciation for his 20 years of devoted service to the people of the Charter Township of Van Buren.
Can I say, Bart, a few words?
I do have a few words. I'll try to keep it short. Apparently, there was a video that went a little viral that kind of explained how hard it was for me to make the decision. I made the right decision. It's time for some new blood, new train of thoughts. It's been a great career at Van Buren Township. I live in Van Buren Township. I've worked with great guys and gals over at the police department, great commanders, and I couldn't feel any more blessed. And I was blessed with the part-time job with the city of Belleville, so I still get to see all my brothers and sisters, still get to wear their badge, which I'm proud of. All I can say is thanks. Thanks for a great career.
Thank you. Shake our hand. Give us the honor. Is that in your hand? How many hits you got on that right now?
A million.
Was it a million? Because it was in a hundred thousand.
I assumed it was.
It wasn't supposed to be there. That's for personal.
Well, for keeping us all safe.
You moved everybody, yeah.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Bart. We'll let you run if you need to. Okay, we're going to move on. Now, we have Jason Macheski. He's from the Senior Alliance. Jason's a, I'm a fan of Jason. He's done wonderful work in government all his life. Short life. Go ahead.
Thank you, Supervisor McInerney. Members of the Township Board for having us on your agenda today. My name is Jason Machieski. I'm the Chief Information and Planning Officer at the Senior Alliance, which is your area agency on aging. I'm here tonight for our annual update on the activities at the Senior Alliance. You may know that we serve the 34 communities of Western and Southern Wayne County, and we thank Van Buren Township for your continued support of our agency, including your $1,885 community match, which we very much appreciate. Helps us leverage many times that in funding to serve older adults in our community. I'll highlight just a few of our services, so that those watching on TV may find interest in them and call us, or members of the board who interact with folks out in the community can refer them as well. Probably one of our most widely used programs is known as Medicaid Medicare Assistance Program, helping adults 65 and over sign up for Medicare or potentially sign up for Medicaid. It's a volunteer program, to one-on-one counseling, unbiased information to help understand the choices that need to be made for Medicare coverage, including Part D prescription plans, which can be very confusing. So we encourage anybody with questions about that process to give us a call, because we can help them work through it. Second, our Information and Assistance Department is a call center operation. We have three individuals that answer our main phone line during the course of our regular business hours, answering anything from where's my local senior center, to my mother's being discharged from the hospital tomorrow, needs special assistance, and we don't know what to do, and anything in between. We receive about 36,000 calls a year, and encourage anybody with questions about seniors and caregiving to give us a call. One of our, probably our most significant program in terms of funding is the My Choice Medicaid Waiver, which helps keeps individuals living in their home rather than in a nursing facility, and we do that by arranging care management and services for those individuals. We also have a small transportation program that can provide free rides for residents of our service area to medical appointments, or clinical appointments. We have five vehicles that provide those rides, and it is a ride of last resort. We try and exhaust all other options before providing this ride, and it's not intended to be a repeat service, but is nonetheless there in case of a situation that somebody might need a ride to a doctor's appointment. Supervisor, you mentioned the Meals on Wheels program at the beginning of the meeting. That is the second-largest program after our My Choice Medicaid Waiver program. We serve about 2,300 individuals through Meals on Wheels every day in our service area, another 600 through congregate meals, and another 600 every month through a liquid nutrition program. So over 4,000 individuals in our area are involved in nutrition services. Our agency has a $30 million budget, and we're proud to say that we only spend 4% of that on administrative expenses. 96% gets put into services in the community. Our audits are unqualified. We have no findings, no recommendations, no management letters for the past 10 years. Very fiscally sound organization. So we thank you for helping us serve older adults in the community and your work through your senior center here with Ms. Jordan, who's been a great partner of ours. We were able to have a public hearing here last week for our annual implementation plan. So in our efforts to continually inform residents, we appreciate your assistance. I want to give out our phone number real quick, in case anybody has questions about older adults, caregivers, or services. It's 1-800-815-1112, and our website is thesenioralliance.org. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
We work with this group daily. This is our primary support group for senior citizens. No questions, Jason?
All right.
Your luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, we have, I have one or two short announcements before we go to the State of Township Address. First of all, June 30th, Saturday, June 30th, is our Van Buren Township fireworks over at Beck Ballfields. It's June 30th. That's on schedule. It's going to happen. If you're going to, you want to join Weight Watchers, we do Weight Watchers here on Thursdays at noon. Starts, new classes start July 5th. Join me, July 5th, because I will be joining. We also have our famous Health and Wellness Expo, June 14th, at the September Day Senior Center. Free admission for everybody, dancing, food. It's a wonderful time, very popular event here. So I hope you guys can make it. It's Thursday, June 14th here.
What was the time?
Oh, excuse me, 1 to 6. With that, I gave you the State of the Township Address. We did make some modifications to it, just some minor ones, and I was asked to do the speech for the board, and since I didn't want to drag you guys in for a separate time, it is 15 to 20 minutes, and we did it on video, so that it would go smoothly and as quickly as possible and accurately as possible. So, Ally, could you take it away?
Dear colleagues, friends, and citizens of Van Buren Township, the following is your State of the Township address. It is meant to highlight the activities and accomplishments of the last year in Van Buren Township government. And none of this would have been possible without your Board of Trustees, which I'd like to thank first. They are truly a passionate, caring group. No one person can do anything alone, and nothing, absolutely nothing we are presenting today could have been done without their creativity, their courage, and their dedication to the township that they hold dear. Business is booming here in Van Buren Township. Again, we have a new hotel. The Planet Fitness has moved in, and it is again proving that no business goes out of business in our central business district. Menards is slated for a July opening, and Speedway is ready to break ground. News that many have missed is the 1.5 million square feet of office warehouse building that Ashley Capital is getting ready to break ground near Hagerty Road off E-course. This is actually Amazon big. It's actually bigger than Amazon square footage-wise. But Van Buren Township is not just taking in deals that come to us. If they don't fit the zoning and the character of our community, then we are walking away, period. We are not in the position that Van Buren must develop or build to stay financially solvent. We are financially strong, and we are getting picky about how we expand. We are not going to expand just to expand. Public safety. Some politicians search their whole lives trying to figure out what our community truly wants. Our community responded loudly that above all else, they wanted premier public safety. They voted in a 6.5 mil public safety tax, and they voted it in by landslide. This board heard you loud and clear. We have set about to rebuild our public safety department that can stand proudly as one of the best in the state. Our cars are being routinely changed out, and we are even going to try out our new F-150 police interceptor. We got a new patrol boat on the water, a new dive trailer, and we got those through grants to the Wayne County Sheriff and the Van Buren Civic Fund. And we reinvested in our 9/11 dispatch with the city of Belleville. Our new dispatch center was a $160,000 rebuild. It is now state-of-the-art technology. We have often been borrowing dogs for the canine groups from Canton to do tracking, among other things, and searches. But while we have just completed a search of our officers, and we have a new officer, Officer Barry, who will be our newest canine handler. We're getting a dog. The dog will be a German Shepherd. He's actually here. He's going through currently extensive training before he goes on duty. The money for this program is coming from our drug forfeiture fund. In addition, we now have a new fire truck. A new fire truck. It's only a few months old, almost a half million dollars, and when that's teamed up with our new million-dollar ladder truck and our best-in-class fire halls that we've already built, Van Buren Fire will have one of the most modern fire departments in the state of Michigan. Again, one of the most modern fire departments in the state of Michigan. Equipment and facilities are good, but we need to keep the pipeline feeding us quality people. In light of that, we have made agreements last year to start a Belleville High School Fire Academy. In addition, we have negotiated a deal to have two police and our fully paid Fire Academy scholarships with Schoolcraft College. We took our old ladder truck, which was unusable by the state of Michigan. They wouldn't even let us take it on runs, and we traded it for scholarships. I can tell you that other safety departments in the state of Michigan recognize that when you start funding your own destiny this way, a community is stepping up to become one of the premier and next-level communities in public safety. And this board has worked very hard to establish its public safety community as one of those next-level departments. Our supreme training has even led to Van Buren Fire opening this year a Van Buren Fire Academy. We have six future firefighters who will be in this first class. I don't know of anybody else that runs their own fire academy. In addition to training, we've been training with Narcan. Narcan is a drug that you administer to an overdosed opioid victim. We've not only got a grant, a grant through the Detroit Wayne County Mental Health Board, but we have helped get and train our brothers in Belleville and in Sumter, and have scheduled and already procured the drug for Superintendent Kudlak and the Van Buren Public Schools. It is an amazing drug, and while we have already gone through 17 life-saving moments with this drug, I can tell you, we have saved people who were passed out with no pulse with this drug. Training is king in Van Buren. We train our board, we train our other boards to be better planners, trustees, clerks, treasurers, supervisors. We train our people on time management, abuse in the workplace, and recently, we closed Township Hall and held classes on emergency drills, including tornadoes, fire, and active shooters. We actually had live blanks being fired, police officers sneaking around, acting like they were shooters looking for the supervisor or a board member. They actually did it, and then they came back an hour later without us knowing and did it again, and then they came back and did it again. It's actually very scary, but it was the best training I have ever received. I thank them for allowing the employees to take part in this intense training. Thank you, board. Clerk Leon Wright is always busy. He has updated himself with new tabulators, voter assistance terminals, high-speed terminals, and absentee ballot systems. Stuff that makes me yawn, but to a dedicated, serious clerk-type person, this is exciting stuff. He is so excited that he is holding an open house with Sumter Township on these items for June 9th and 10th, from 10 to noon. It's that kind of love for clerk stuff that made Clerk Leon Wright Michigan's Clerk of the Year, and we're very proud of him for it. Water and Sewer is another one that kind of makes people yawn, unless you get a grant for $770,000 to assess your system. We did. You were required to do it anyway, and we got out in front of everybody else out there and received one of the very first of these grants, and so we got a lot of money to do it. We're going to do it. We're going to make sure that you've got the best system out there. Because of this, Van Buren has the lowest rates in the region. I want to say thank you to our Board of Trustees for making that happen, and our Water Board that works diligently to keep that up, and Director Taylor. Next, I'd like to talk to you about the Belleville Area Museum. Otherwise, it's known as the Old Van Buren Township Hall. They had a great year. Its attendance was up 32% to almost 6,000 visitors last year. In addition, the Van Buren Civic Fund has awarded nearly $9,000 to the museum for new storage systems, exhibit parcels, a system to make descriptive plaques for the exhibits, and other museums-type stuff. They also held their first fundraiser last year. It was a dinner. Of course, it was a packed house. When the Van Buren Township Board of Trustees were welcomed back, we had a board meeting in the city of Belleville in Van Buren's Old Town Hall. Belleville Councilman Tom Philler gave a welcoming speech, and our board expressed its desire to keep the close relations with the Belleville area community strong. Perhaps we can do that again in a few years. I'm looking forward to hearing that. Last year, the museum also got a lot of help from the REAL program, and that's, the REAL program will be back again. That is our Summer Youth Jobs Program. I'll talk about that more later. Chuck Covington. Mr. Chuck Covington is a true honored citizen of Van Buren Township. He donated a much-needed van that has a built-in wheelchair lift system. It is on the road now and working miracles every day. We wish the Covingtons all the love of our community. We can't imagine the grief of losing their daughter, Egypt. And what a class family to follow that loss with making such a truly great gift to the community. We're truly blessed to have them being part of our community. The REAL is our summer youth employment. It's back. There'll be more than 30 kids this year. The board recognized the importance of this program to our seniors. The number of seniors that cried in my arms last year became a weekly thing. It was amazing. They thought they were forgotten. They thought they would have to move because they could not maintain their yards or their houses. They saw the beauty that they had created in their homes be destroyed by neglect, only to be reborn, this beauty, by a dozen kids having fun and making some money. If you want to feel good about yourself in life, get involved. It is amazing what they do. This program is expanding, and this year will include life skills and a day of corporate team-building. They're going to solve mousetrap kind of ideas that the corporate executives would do, and then they're going to build a cardboard boat and try to sail, and try and get in it and take it across a pool. This is all grant-funded by the Detroit Wayne County Mental Health Authority, and we're excited to do this again this year and help out people. Anybody with ideas that these kids could do, we'd love to hear about it. We're now talking about the Iron Bell Trail. The Iron Bell Trail, Phase 1, is now in the books. Well, we know if it's funded, it will start. It's going to start on Here and River Drive and travel from Belleville to Riggs Park. It will be a bike and pedestrian and be between 6 and 10 feet wide. The board will decide where it will go from there in the future as money becomes available. This is a long-term project, and it will take years to construct. We have to gather more grants and more money, and we have to decide which way it's going to go. The board will make those determinations. Next, we have Van Buren Park. Van Buren Park is off I-94. It is now open. It has a brand-new pavilion and a new playscapes for kids that we built over the winter. You should go check it out. Again, these are more grant-funded opportunities, paid entirely with grant dollars. If you're hearing a trend here about grants, we are getting very aggressive on getting grants. It's one of the ways we're expanding services without impacting our residents' tax dollars. I do need to mention that the Lake Ledger is officially back. It's now old news, but it has programming for everything in the Belleville area. Almost all the sports, senior, and youth activities are listed inside of there, whether they be private or governmentally funded. The Candy Loop at Kirk Park, they had a great Halloween. The Daddy Daughter Dance is now a two-day sellout event, and the Senior Health Expo, which has got Walter Rohobiak's turkey stuffed with deer burn sausage that everybody loves. Their lines actually were running out the building for that event. My hat's off to those directors, their staffs, and the volunteers that made that happen. Next, I'd like to talk about the DNR Park, the Lake House, or whatever it's going to be. Someone said to me, is that still a thing? We are still in negotiations with the MDNR. They take a while. What is going to go there, I don't know. The board will make that decision. The board will make that decision, and they'll make it with community input. I am not an architect. I don't know landscape or design. My wife picks out my clothes for me, but I do know finance, and I know how to generate revenue. I love it like Clerk Wright likes his tabulators and election equipment. I have gone to the board, and they have approved the technical expertise, both legal and accounting, that I needed to go after money aggressively. They have been very helpful. By doing that, we have actively gone out there, and we had a goal of two million dollars. We shot past that goal a long time ago. I am currently looking at raising over five-and-a-half million dollars in corporate, not general fund residential tax dollars. This is not residential tax dollars. We also hope to raise one million dollars in state and federal grants, and we will, we have requested about a one-and-a-half million dollars from the Van Buren taxpayer, which would be used to purchase the property, do the engineering, and provide matching grant capabilities to get more money. I believe that we can re-raise over eight million dollars with only one-and-a-half million dollars coming from the local taxes, and I believe that I will have secured the corporate portion of this funding within the next three months. We will. So, take a look at the numbers and ask yourself, we have pretty much a good plan going to eight million. I believe we're close to six-and-a-half, seven. Uh, is this a thing? I think it is. As for the DDA, the DDA has a couple of things that people keep on wondering if are going to happen, and they are. The first is our Pocket Park. The Pocket Park just went through the DDA approval the other day, and it is approved, and it will be, uh, breaking ground again in July. I believe that it's gonna be scheduled to open up next year. In addition, you're going to see I-94 Overpass on Belleville Road. It's gonna go on the east side. This is gonna be, uh, have some smart lights for crossing the intersections that'll provide, uh, causeway that we dearly need. It's a very dangerous thing to walk or bike across right now, but as you can see, we put a very inconspicuous reference to Van Buren Township, which we hid on the bridge, and I'll let you see if you can find it. Waste Management. We have a new landfill deal. It provides stability to Van Buren's finances for the next thirty years. It shores up our long-term debt fund, which should be adequate for our needs going forward. Of course, we did lose free pickup. Van Buren Township is the last community that we know of in the Midwest receives free pickup. We wish it could have continued, but starting in five years from now, five years from now, uh, we will need to begin paying for a pickup. It will cost approximately twelve dollars a household. It was a very difficult decision for the board, but they were tasked to make a tough decision, and I think they did their jobs very well here. The Treasurer. The Treasurer's office last year had a busy one. Forty-three thousand cash receipts for over sixty-six million dollars in deposits. She does a great job after thirty-eight years of working for the community. What a lot of people in Van Buren already know is that I go to the other electeds often for help. It is a team dynamic. Clerk Wright knows insurance, is on the board, and works, works the health insurance and labor contracts with Treasurer Bud. This year, they got our health insurance, excellent insurance, by the way, to go down eight percent. Insurance claims are completed, and we are now sitting on a pretty clean insurance claim backlog. We have no large lawsuits pending out there. Treasurer Bud knows costs, and she knows every line item in that budget. Speaking of the budget, and I saved this for last on purpose, I have always said that the bottom level of good governance is balancing the books. The goal is a given, and no one should ever brag about it because it's your job to balance the books. We had a good year, but a lot of people think we spent a ton of money on stuff. We did, mostly in grants. But with the board's vision, we also reinvented the way we do business in Van Buren Township. We got aggressive on grants. We got them, we spent them, and then we went out and got more. We redid most of our ordinances so that when we can not only, so that not only can we be gentler to our citizens, uh, when they break the rules by issuing them warnings, but when we do have to fine them, the, the fines are not sent downtown to Wayne County courts. They stay here in Van Buren with a little going to our local courts. That's the way modern government does it. We did, re-redid our fee schedules with modern government practices to recoup whole department costs and get them off the general fund. We cut medical costs, and we did not cut services. We saved nearly five-hundred-thousand dollars. We reached out to the corporate world to fund events and to fund future projects. So, here's our budget. Van Buren's freshly audited books show a one-point-nine-million-dollar surplus of revenues against expenses. One-point-nine million. Treasurer Bud has stated in her thirty-eight years, I have never seen anything like it. This is teamwork. No one person does this. It's the board giving management the tools and directing the ship. It's the full-timers doing their job correctly, and it's the directors managing their budgets and coming up with innovative ideas to old problems. Van Buren Township is back. We are fiscally strong. We have a clear vision of the future and how we're going to get there. It truly is a good day to live in Van Buren Township. Okay, we're back, right? Okay, um, that would be my, uh, that would be the State of the Township address. I thought it would be easiest to do it that way. That way, we don't have to go through too much. Uh, we are still in the announcement section. Does anybody else have any announcements that they would like to make? Nope. Moving forward, we're in the public comment on, on any new business. Does anybody have any public comments on new business? Nope. When we need a new business, the first item is going to be to consider, let me get over to it. To consider approval of the amendment to the, no, no, no. We're gonna go to the first item that's going to be, uh...
Twenty eighteen ten.
Thank you. Could I?
Yep.
The first item is going to be twenty eighteen ten, uh, resolution requesting aid from the state of Michigan, uh, on the Visteon project. Uh, how do we do the presentation? I guess I'm going to have to hand it over. All right. We have a resolution. Uh, bottom line is, uh, what's going on is we, we are suing Visteon over the fact that Visteon, we believe they owe us money. They, they sued us, countersued and stated that it's not time to go to court because we're not financially being hurt yet. So, we've going to the courts to say, we are being financially hurt. We know we are going to be financially hurt next year, so if you work, wait till we're financially hurt, then it's gonna take three years while we're being hurt, while you decide whether or not you're, you're gonna make Visteon, make us whole. So, we've gone to the Supreme Court, and we lost almost all the way to the Supreme Court, and now the Supreme Court, out of the blue, said, we understand your arguments. Do you have any other arguments involved that we may want to consider before we pass a ruling? And that's when we decided we were going to try and drag in all the townships and cities in the state of Michigan. We've gone to the MTA, and we've gone to the Michigan Municipal League, and we have asked them to join this lawsuit, at least, uh, with their legal resources, because any decision against Van Buren Township on winning or, uh, uh, is going to be detrimental to any other community that has this happen to them in the future. So, we only have till, I think, the twentieth or thirtieth of June to get this done to the Supreme Court. MML and MTA have agreed to take this up immediately, and they're legal, so this is a resolution asking them to take it up immediately to provide aid through their legal group so that they can draft, um, draft a resolution and an argument to the Supreme Court to be attached to ours. That is what this is all about. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Kind of working fast here. So, um, does anybody have any questions? And I'm gonna be kind of winging it because this has real, been going quick.
You were very clear.
Okay.
Through the chair, I'd just like to say, I think it's a good move on our part and all the communities. I mean, the MTA and they understand the ramifications this could have for other communities. So, there's more power in numbers.
We were shocked when they let us open it, reopen it, and the first thing we thought of was all the other people that could be hurt by it, so we're lucky to be able to do this. Okay, I'll, I'll trust you. Treasurer Bud?
I was gonna make a motion. I was gonna make a motion.
But, but, Ford, I'd, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the supervisor just stated that we have a lot of money, and, and we do. However, Visteon Village was built upon the premise that they would, uh, expand and have enough tax dollars going to the, uh, local district financing for the, the LDFA, and it would be repaid from the LDFA funds from the tax, uh, collections that we receive from the Visteon Village. That has not happened. Uh, Visteon Village has not built out like they said they would build out with the, all the other buildings and everything that was supposed to be on there, and they've done practically nothing as far as expanding their campus. So, in regard to that, we have a shortfall in the local district financing authority, and that's where those, uh, uh, dollars are supposed to be paid for the, uh, bonds for Visteon. So, that's, that's the reason for, uh, this request.
Mm-hmm. Great. Treasurer Bud?
Through the chair, I would consider that the board approve Resolution twenty eighteen ten, the request for supportive aid from the Michigan Municipal League Defense Fund and/or the Michigan Township Association Legal Defense Fund for impending litigation against Visteon.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion for by Treasurer Bud, supported by Trustee Miller. Hearing no further comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. Next item will be, uh, to consider approval of the amendment to the mutual aid agreement between the township of Ypsilanti's fire department, uh, fire department and our fire department. Chief, could you take it away?
As you know, in our current, uh, mutual aid agreement, we, when Ypsil County Township has a fire or a large incident that they need us, we send, uh, two apparatuses with four of our people, and I'd like to get that modified so that we only are sending one engine with two of our people there so that, uh, we have adequate coverage here in the township.
Great. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, I'd just like to, through the chair, I'd just like to compliment the, uh, chief and say that it's a good, it's a good change in our program to only be sending one, uh, so that we will have adequate coverage, and, um, I commend you on leading the department in such a, uh, good direction. We're headed in the right direction, so I appreciate that.
I did not get a motion, did I?
No.
Can somebody make a motion?
Through the chair. I make a motion. We approve the amendment to the mutual aid agreement between the township and Ypsil Township Fire Department.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Treasurer Bud, supported by Trustee Miller. Hearing any other discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed. This motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item is to consider approval of DTE Community Lighting Contract in the amount of one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars for the Township Hall's parking lot, uh, lighting replacement. Can I get a motion?
Supervisor, I make a motion to consider approval of the DTE Community Lighting Contract in the amount of one-twelve-two-sixty-one for Township Hall Parking Lot Lighting Replacement.
Support.
And a motion of support. Let's move, let's go to Director.
Good evening, Board. In late two thousand seventeen, Building and Grounds Department directed the township engineer to study the condition of the light poles in the parking lot at the main campus here at Township Hall. Engineers from Fishbeck concluded in their study that the light poles' concrete bases were either not properly designed, constructed, or both. While safe, they stated that the bases could not be economically repaired and recommended installing new lighting and bases throughout the entire campus. They estimated, through a detailed construction engineer's estimate, that the project would cost approximately three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Building and Grounds Superintendent Jeff Fonda contacted DTE and inquired whether DTE's community lighting program would be beneficial for the township to participate in to replace these lights. Public Services requested DTE draft a contract for the lighting installation after they did a detailed study of our lighting situation here at the township. They proved in their lighting study that not only could they provide brighter, safer parking lot for our residents at night, but they could do it for cheaper, as well as with less lights. So, DTE's contract is for not three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, which is the engineer's estimate, but for one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. An additional eight thousand dollars is estimated for demolition and the taking away of the remaining concrete and light poles. Once installed, the only cost incurred to the township will be the cost to operate the lights, which is estimated to be ten thousand, uh, ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars per year. Participating in this lighting program will bring significant savings to the township, reduce maintenance responsibility, and increase the safety in the parking areas for our residents, guests, and staff. Staff is requesting the board consider approval of the DTE contract in the amount of one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. This would be charged to the two thousand eighteen Building and Grounds capital outlay budget, which it was budgeted for in two thousand, for two thousand eighteen. And lastly, this is exactly the same type of program that we allow our community subdivisions to be, participate in. It's the exact same program. And with that, I will answer any questions the board may have.
Director Best?
Yep.
For years, I thought our parking lot was dimly lit, so I, I'm so happy to hear that it will be much brighter, especially in the winter months. Yesterday, I asked the question, what is the electrical savings from one year to the next for the difference in, in going to the LED light? So, can you?
Specifically for the LED, moving from the metal halide lights to the LED lights will save two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars annually, which is a seventy-five percent reduction in cost.
That's excellent. Thank you.
It's too patient.
Um, I just wanted to, DTE will be maintaining the lights and the light poles, so if, when it's time to replace the lights, our, uh, maintenance will not have to do it. DTE is responsible for the maintenance of this new system.
That's correct. The DT Option One, which we are participating in in the community lighting program, is, covers the electrical cost as well as the, uh, operation cost, maintenance cost, and replacement.
This is a great savings for our community.
Yes.
Anything else?
Through the chair.
Mr. Byrne.
Director Best, when do we anticipate this project commencing?
Uh, Deborah Kane from DTE is, uh, has assured me that the poles are ready. In fact, if, later, if you want to see what they're going to look like, I have two copies of the lights, so if you want to see them. She assured me that they have them in stock and ready to go. All we have to do is sign the contract, and they'll get the crews start working immediately. So, now, I don't know what immediately means for DTE, but as fast as they can move, yes.
Great. All set?
We'll have the light. We'll see the light, maybe.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? This motion passes. Director, stay there. Next item is to consider approval of Public Service Budget Amendment in the amount of two-hundred-thousand dollars for various projects. Can I get a motion?
Through the chair.
Trustee Byrne.
I move, uh, approve the Public Services Budget Amendment in the amount of two-hundred-thousand dollars for various projects.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion in support. Director, could you take it away?
Once again, thank you, Board. Several projects were planned for two thousand seventeen in the building planning, building and grounds, water and sewer programs that were not started and/or not completed. Some of these projects were completed in early two thousand eighteen. Staff is requesting that the board consider an approval of a budget amendment of two-hundred-thousand dollars to be transferred from the fund balance to allow for the completion and payment of these projects. The projects for which, uh, for which, which are part of this are found in the, in a table that's been provided to you. A brief description for each project and effort is also been provided. I'll outline them, uh, to you now, and just remember, as we talk, any project that was over two-hundred-thousand dollars has already been brought to the board for approval or will be brought to the board for approval. any project that was over $200,000 has already been brought to the board for approval or will be brought to the board for approval.
Over $20?
Yes.
$20,000.
The purchasing. The first project that was part of this was the carpet for the police, public safety, and the assessor's office, which was, which was planned for in 17 and was not installed until early 18. That was paid for in early 18, and we are asking for that money to be brought back from the original pot of money that it was from and restored so that it can go back. And that's for the carpet for the police and the assessing office. The fire station, the carpet in there is completely unsafe. We had planned on replacing it. We hadn't gotten around to it because of the police and assessors were being held up. We now have, were ready to go. It was intended to be done last year. That project is part of it. Architectural and engineering costs. One of the, the little, it's for, one of the little-known ways that the township keeps working is there's a lot of small projects and things that allow for the township to create big bang for the buck. For example, what we're, what this line item for the budget is, is for any architectural, engineering costs or projects that we're using, doing in building and grounds for ourselves, that we're building in the parks, which we're doing for building and planning or for economic development. A couple of examples of projects, the CDBG program, which in Van Buren Park, which you saw some of the pictures for, we installed, we were planning on doing a pavilion project and a playground project as well as a toddler park. Wayne County came to us and said, "You have to do three months of work in three weeks in order to keep your grant money alive." We had to spend additional money to get that work done in order to get the addition, we spent about an extra $10,000 or so dollars to get $200,000 worth of project benefits, because we had to hurry up and get the work done. Also, projects such as doing preliminary, preliminary work for economic development projects that a developer comes in and is preparing to do work, we have to sometimes bring our engineers onboard to do water, water and sewer assessments to determine the feasibility of them siting at a certain facility. Projects such as that, small amounts that help make the township, that make, make projects happen that make the township go. So, that's the assessing architectural and engineering costs. Space and Needs Assessment Project. I'm sure you've heard the supervisor speak of the planning for the Space and Needs Assessment Project. This covers the cost of the project. We planned on doing this in 17. It got pushed back for various reasons. It was part of our amount that we had earmarked. That's to pay for the Space and Needs Assessment. And finally, the carport replacement. During the tornado, I mean, high winds that we had over here in the carport that blew one of our carports over, we had made an insurance claim for the one carport that was flipped over, but then when we assessed the other carport, it also needs to be replaced. While we have money to replace the one, we also felt it's necessary to replace the second one. So, in 17, we planned on placing, replacing both. It just took a lot longer to find a quote because there's not a lot of people that can put in the carport we wanted. So, it took a lot longer for us to do that. We found the person. We found the right price. We bid it out. We're ready to go. I just need your approval for that to move, and when it is time, we'll bring that to the board for approval. But I need to have the, the budget appropriated properly so I can move forward. We're looking for the developmental, our, our group is looking, the developmental services team, which is made up of building and grounds, planning, water, sewer, parks, and parks and rec, we're looking for the board to consider the approval of this budget amendment. We're asking once again to, for the board to transfer the $200,000 into the appropriate budget accounts for these projects. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have one, but I believe that since the maker of the motion was.
Trustee Martin, you are the maker, so you have a question.
I'd just like to make a comment that the, the carport that you've mentioned, I guess you should tell them that the foundation or the, it's rusted and corroded and about to fall down on its own. So, and it's not in use anymore because of safety issues.
That's absolutely correct. The police department cannot put their cars underneath the safe, safety of the carport because of the potential for the foundation of that structure to fail. So, we're, we have blocked it off, and we're waiting for, to move forward on this. It'll be cheaper for us to replace them both than to do one and then have the other one come back next year or the year after. So, having them do it in one shot is the best way to do it.
Trustee Miller.
Director Best, the carpet, are you using local vendors?
We bid out local vendors for all the, we had.
Were they selected?
Was the local vendor selected?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm going to field this just for a second.
Sure.
Okay, we did file the purchasing ordinance. Purchasing ordinance gives 5%, correct?
Yes, sir.
It gives 5% preference to a local vendor. So, Van Buren Company comes within 4.9% of the, of the lowest bid we will award to the Van Buren person. Right? It's as good as we can get. So, I believe that they did not win this one.
Didn't.
And we were, we were sorry that they didn't.
They got an opportunity to bid it, but they did not, they were not selected.
But there, there are more bids coming up, and we, you know, we're going to welcome a bid again.
I'm sorry to hear that, but okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay, hearing no further questions, I have a motion by Trustee Martin, supported by Trustee Miller. All in favor? Aye opposed. This motion passes.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next item is to consider adoption of the revised Board of Zoning Appeals Rules and Procedures. Do we have somebody to speak on that? So, that'd be you. Okay.
Sure. I believe in your packet you will find the, the Board of Zoning Appeals actually did an update to the rules and procedures. It should have been, I think they did a code of, you have it? Thank you. Appreciate it. The Board of Zoning Appeals requested that staff take a look at its current rules and procedures to determine if the document was up to date, and frankly, it wasn't up to date. They wanted to make sure that it met best practices for a Board of Zoning Appeals group. After several meetings and a considerable amount of review and discussion, the BZA recommend the township board approve the document at their April meeting. There are several changes that provide clarification on these items, including conflict of interest, ex parte contact, what needs to be in the minutes. You have in your packet the, the, the updated rules, the, what is it called again? The Rules of Procedure. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's very similar to what you guys have done in the last few, the last few weeks in updating codes of conduct and things.
I understand they had quite a few meetings and deliberations and some training modules to get this up to speed, correct?
Yes.
And it was been approved by the legal?
Yes.
I need to take a motion, and I neglected again.
To the chair. I make a motion. We can, we consider adoption of the revised Board of Zoning Appeals Rules of Procedures.
Mr. Martin. Oh, was that Trustee, who, which? I didn't hear. You?
Chair, a second.
Okay. I heard voices. Okay. Okay, is there any questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is our reports, and we have none. So, we're now down to public comment for non-agenda items. This is public comment on any item that they would like to speak on. Would you like to come up? Do you guys want to speak on something? Okay. None. Next item is board comments on non-agenda items. Does anybody want a comment on a non-agenda item? My, okay. Last item is adjournment. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Supervisor, I make a motion to adjourn. Support.
Trustee Martin, support. All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, I thought for sure.